Good evening, welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District 6. Tonight, today is February 26, 2024. This meeting will now come to order. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?
Director Azari.
Present.
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
All board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Again, welcome, whether you're joining us in person or online. We're glad that you are with us tonight. And just want to go through a few announcements. We do have a fun meeting tonight, one that doesn't require too much business, but a lot of celebration. And so we want to get right to those celebrations. But I did want to alert you to a few announcements, and one of those is that on Friday, we have the District 6 Annual Arts Walk Night. And so anywhere downtown, I say anywhere, maybe not anywhere downtown, but in most, a lot of different restaurants and events. I know at the Ice House and some of the restaurants on 8th, you can come and see art that's been done by students all across District 6. And so we would love for you to come out. We do this in conjunction with the Greeley Arts District, as well as the DDA for Greeley. And so please think about coming downtown for the Greeley Walk, Arts Walk. Also this weekend, if you don't want to walk around downtown, you can go see Greeley West is putting on, they're doing Mean Girls, and that begins March 1st and March 2nd. They'll also be performing on March 8th and March 9th. Also Greeley Central next weekend as well is doing Guys and Dolls, and that's March 6th through March 9th. And so if you're, this is a great month for arts, and so if you could join us, we would, we would love that. Also, wanted to let everyone know just that our superintendent won't be here tonight. And so she is at the Chiefs for Change. It's a bipartisan network for diverse state and district education chiefs that focuses on advocacy and leadership development. And so it's a great honor for her to be chosen for this event and for this group. And so we're very glad for her, but she won't be joining us tonight. But those are all the announcements that I have. And so we'll move on to our, the next portion of our agenda, which is the Superintendent's Honor Roll. And so as I've just said, Dr. Pilch is not here, so I'd like to invite Ms. Annette Overton to the podium to make a brief, give us a brief update on some recent hires.
Thank you, President Matthews. Good evening, Board of Directors. It's my pleasure tonight to bring forward to you our two newest administrative hires that will begin July, therefore our next school year. I'm pleased tonight to recognize Natalie Tannell. Would you stand? Please, ma'am. Thank you. She will be the Assistant Principal at Maplewood Elementary. And Ms. Tannell began her educational career in 2015, teaching 5th grade at Dos Rios Elementary. And at Dos, she served as a Title I Intervention Behavior Intervention Specialist. She has served as an interim Assistant Principal and a 4th and 5th grade teacher. Most recently, she serves, and currently, she is serving as Dean of Students at Hyman Elementary. Ms. Tannell obtained her Bachelor's of Arts degree in interdisciplinary studies for elementary teaching from the University of Northern Colorado. And then she obtained her Master's of Arts degree in educational leadership, also from UNC. The next, thank you Natalie, the next, the next person that I have to introduce is Mr. Wade Corliss. I'm pleased to recommend him to you tonight as the new Chief of Safety and Security. Mr. Corliss began his law enforcement career in 2008 and served for 14 years in the Greeley Police Department as Patrol Officer, Patrol Supervisor, School Resource Officer, and School Resource Officer Supervisor, SWAT Operator, and SWAT Team Leader. Mr. Corliss achieved the rank of Sergeant in 2018. During his time at District 6, Mr. Corliss has used his experience to participate in planning district safety and security policies and procedures, supervise campus monitors, and assist in providing training and resources to school administrators and staff. He, of course, is the liaison to the Greeley Police Department, as well as the City of Greeley Office of Emergency Management and Public Works. Both of these hires, thank you, thank you, Mr. Corliss. You will find both of these hires on the personnel report for your approval later tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Overton. Next on our Superintendent's Honor Roll, we also have a treat for everyone tonight. And we do have Greeley Central here to, with a song, I don't see, oh, she's coming in. Give us just a taste of Guys and Dolls.
Hi, I'm Palmer Mimm, I'm playing Adelaide in Guys and Dolls at Greeley Central High School. Our show is March 6th through 9th, and you can buy tickets on our website. That's you, the average unmarried female, basically it's your fault. To some long frustrations they react. Recycle some mad symptoms, difficult to endure. A sexy, the unfilled respiratory tract. In other words, just one way around for that clean little man, a gold, a person, can develop a cold. You can spray her happy if you're just wrapped up in a work. You can give her a shot of whatever she's got, but it just won't work. If she's tired getting a fish eye from the hotel clerk, a person can develop a cold. The female relating single, just enough legal sense. So the neurotic tendencies seem not right. Recycle some mad symptoms, toxic in high spirits. It involves in the eye, the ear, the nose, and the throat. In other words, just one worrying whether the wedding is on or off. A person can develop a cold. You can feed her all cake with a vitamin A and a bromelies. But the medicine that gets everywhere near where the trouble is. If she's getting a kind of a name for herself and her name is, a person can develop a cough. And further more, stolen, 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 nobody to read. A person can develop a cold. One thing that's on the terrain tonight, yeah, girl. And she can hear church bells chime. The compartment's air conditioned and the noise blind. Then they get off in Saratoga for the forty times a person. Can develop a grip, a grip, a long night on the river with the weasels and the sneakers and the sonnet of really a pimp. From the laxest community property and the village you get into all. A person can develop the best, best part.
Thank you, Palmer. Thank you, Mr. Humphrey, for being here tonight. Again, that is, let me get my dates right, March 6th through 10th, 9th, March 6th through 9th. The Greeley Central is doing Guys and Dolls, and we did invite Greeley West to perform as well, but they start on Friday. And so they are very much in the last stages of preparation. So thank you, guys, for being here tonight. And that concludes our Superintendent's Honor Roll. And we are now on to the approval of the agenda. So if someone would be so kind as to make a motion.
I move that the Board of Education Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Not seeing any. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari.
Aye.
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our Work Session Report. And so again, Ms. Lemon, will you give us this report?
The Work Session began with the Board Member Comments, excuse me, the Work Session began with Board Member Comments and Review of Upcoming Events. The Board received a post-event synopsis of the Casby Student Day at the Capitol. Legal Counsel Nathan Fall presented a legislative update. The Board and Council of Student Representatives had the opportunity to debrief the Work Session.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda tonight, one of our first special items is our Dream Team Scholarship Presentation. So I'd like to invite Ms. Elizabeth Barber to the podium to make, make this presentation for us.
Good evening, President Matthews, Members of the Board. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. I'm Elizabeth Barber, the Executive Director of the Greeley Dream Team, and this is Miranda Ochoa, our Assistant Director of Programs. The Greeley Dream Team is a nonprofit. We've partnered with District 6 for over 36 years. We make college a reality for students. In fact, in the last 20 or so years alone, we've given out over $600,000 in scholarships to over 450 seniors here from District 6. And tonight is no different. Our Board of Directors have awarded 35, the biggest number yet, deserving seniors over $58,000 in scholarships. Also included in our scholarship presentations tonight are the Delia and John W. Hayfley Scholarship. This award will benefit two scholarship recipients from two lifelong Greeley educators who wanted to wish to make a lasting impact on students in need. We also have the Bond Family Summit Award included. This will go to the two students with the highest GPA to celebrate their scholastic achievement. So at this time, since we have so many, I will call them in per high school. We will start with Greeley Central. I'll ask that you hold your applause until all of the Greeley Central recipients are up here. The first is Mary Ann Abdul Kadir. May Moon Abdul Kadir. Jordan Garcia. Vanessa Hernandez. Honey Hearsy. Honey Hearsy. Hazel Ibarra Mesta. Bobby Molinar. Kotiza Motul Hussein. Leslie Sanchez Rosales. Martha Sandoval. And Kimberly Vialopos Quintana. This is the Greeley Central group. I'll now call in Greeley West High School. Our first student up is Sarari Montanez. Angeline Flores Luna. Sabine Mont. Bella Perez. Esmeralda Perez. Rosa Leo Virreal. And Angel Hernandez from Jefferson High School. Okay, Greeley West, if you head out that door. The next school will be Early College Academy. Okay. Batel Araya. Erica Servantas Andazola. Carla Conchas Verigara. Eliana Gonzalez. Leanna Herrera. Gloria Lopez. Ruby Ortega Guzman. Lenny Uzare Arce. And Israel Vargas. ECA. Our last high school this evening, and then we'll do a group photo, is Northridge. Anai Ariano. Tierra Cardona. Alondra Delgado. Kimberly Loyah Lopez. Guadalupe Marquez Garcia. Joselle Tulid. Mitzia Uriya Liz Araga. And Diego Zamora. Northridge High School. We'll now bring all the students back in to do one large group photo. President Matthews, if you would like to join us up here, the board?
It's all of us, yes.
Or at least stand from your seats.
You want to get in there?
Let's see, we'll ask Teresa how far back everyone needs to be. Teresa, are we going to capture the board members, or do we need to have them move? Everybody take just a little squoosh in together, just squoosh in a little bit more, there you go. There, perfect. Okay, well, on the count of three, we'll say Dream Team. One, two, three.
The Dream Team.
Great job, everyone. Don't move, hold on, don't move. Sorry. We got a lot of cameras in here. President Matthews and the Board of Education, thank you so much for having us here this evening and celebrating the accomplishments of these amazing students here in District Six. We're so grateful. Parents, at this time, if you'd like to get up and exit out the east door.
Well, again, congratulations to all of our Dream Team scholars. Thank you so much, Ms. Barber, for all that you and the Dream Team do for our students. We appreciate all of your efforts, so. Next tonight, we have our Council of Student Representatives report. And as always, we are joined at the dais with, by Natalie Louisa Valenzuela and Reagan Mendelis. These are our two student reps that sit with us each and every meeting. And then we have tonight, for our CSR report, D6 Online Academy. I'd like to invite these students to the podium to make their report.
You can come closer. All right, good evening, President Matthews, Board of Education, and the audience. I just have to say really quickly, I was one of five recipients for the Greeley Dream Team Scholarship back in 2000. So it's amazing to see, and that was from Greeley West, so it's amazing to see the number of students just grow. So, excited to hear about that. But, anyway, I am the Assistant Principal for District Six Online Academy, Cassie Gonzalez, and I'm honored to introduce two of our school's navigator leaders this evening, and I'm with my esteemed colleague Grace Meek, and she teaches high school math for us. One of our navigator leaders is Senior Emma Berg, and then our sophomore Caleb Allen to go ahead and give you an update on our school.
Good evening, President Matthews, Board of Education, and would-be Dr. Pilch. I'm a senior at D6 Online Academy, and I represent my school on the Board of Student Representatives, or on the Council of Student Representatives, sorry. I am president of my school's student council and a member of the National Honor Society. I plan on starting college at Ames before transferring to CU Denver, where I will major in communications with a minor in film. I enrolled in the Online Academy at the start of 2022 because I was unsafe around the people at my old school in another district, and the administration was now accommodating to my chronic illness. Luckily, D6 Online was recommended to us as another option and was exactly what we were looking for. We work hard at D6 Online Academy to build a strong community with students and parents. Our student council has been working on many events to bring students together in person in a positive environment. We have planned and are planning events for each age group, K through 12. Our high school student council has put on a movie and game night for middle school students, and we look forward to having an arts and crafts day for elementary students. That also includes high school students in there. For high school, we're having multiple events, including a bowling party and a prom. Outside of events, we make an effort to promote an open line of communication between students and teachers to guarantee everyone gets the support they need academically and emotionally. Our students report feeling safe to be themselves and having additional extraordinary opportunities to succeed in their education. D6 Online students can take advantage of our concurrent enrollment, participate in the CTE Center, and take part in the internships that our district provides. Even though our enrollment fluctuates and steadily increases throughout the school year, many families in the district do not know we are an option for their academic needs. We're not an alternative school, we are a school in an alternative setting. Sorry. We have a comprehensive curriculum and opportunities like the ones I mentioned earlier within our school. We are in our third year as a school, and every year, multiple students graduate early. As an online school, students can still participate in sports or extracurricular activities at their boundary schools. As I prepare to graduate in May, it is my hope that D6 Online will continue to thrive and provide opportunities for students who will benefit from learning from the comfort of their homes. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, President Matthews, Board of Education, and, as my friend said, Dr. Pilch. I am Caleb Allen, and I am a sophomore at D6 Online Academy with my classmate Emma Berg. I'm here to represent my school as an honorary member of the Council of Student Representatives. I am the social media manager for our student council, and I'm planning on going to Ames for Associates in Computer Science, and then transferring to CU Boulder for a PhD in Robotics. I enrolled in the D6 Online Academy for my freshman year after moving to Colorado due to harassment back in my hometown for being queer and my chronic illnesses not being suited for in-person school. Thankfully, at D6 Online Academy, I have found a better community, environment, and safety. Last year, we expressed our needs to everyone present here today, and it was a significant moment for D6 Online Academy when it was shared with everyone that we would have a building that we would call our home. Thank you. This space has allowed us to receive both individual and group assistance for all of our students, especially for those of us who are seeking additional support to be successful. As a result, we have seen an increase in productivity and engagement, while also seeing a decrease in our failure rates. Along with bringing kids together, it has naturally provided the opportunity to bond and work with other students, which is hard to do in the online setting that we have. Teachers are working with us in creating a supportive group of adults to help guide students to their highest ability. Although we have a school pantry, our families with our, to support our families with their nutritional needs, we still need to provide students with nutritionist meals when they are in the building for additional support. Like other schools without, within District Six, it is essential for us to have access to free nutritional school lunches. Our school makes every effort to provide food for us during visits, but additional support is needed and will be incredibly beneficial for our students. As the online school, I know it doesn't seem like we need to, but we need proper lunches with kids in person almost every day of the week. Food is important to the body and brain and gives us the fuel we need to learn. We appreciate you listening to our concerns and needs, and are excited we'll come for a next school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. I don't know if there are any questions that board members might have for either of you. I'm just curious, personally, how often do you guys get to see each other?
Personally, we go in person twice a week just so we can see each other. We both do relatively well for academics, but since we're best friends, we like to see each other when we can.
Okay. That's great. Well, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you. And we do appreciate our Council of Student Representatives. We appreciate your voice. For anyone who would like to see it, Natalie gave us a report. She and Reagan went to the Capitol last week with Mr. Fall, our attorney, and also Mr. Azari. And they, Natalie gave a great report. If you want to see that, you can check out our work session that was recorded earlier. So, thank you guys for being here tonight. Next on our agenda is our public participation. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members, and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically will not respond or engage in discussion, but we will ask our district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to the Board Secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon, and not to individual board members. The Board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and speakers' remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified and non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping, or other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comment. First tonight, we have Ms. Maria Foster. Welcome, Ms. Foster, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, student council representatives. I just wanted to take note of a couple things that I've seen going on in the district. I've been to a lot of the meetings, and I've heard about the smart labs that are being put in the schools, but I recently saw a Denver Seven report about the number of smart labs, and I did not realize that currently District Six has more smart labs than any other school district nationwide. So I want to applaud the district for looking ahead and looking at the needs of the students and their efforts to try to get smart labs in every primary and middle school. My other thought is I want to note that the efforts that the school district is making to put in food pantries, unfortunately, there's a great need in our community right now and in many communities across the country. Based on what I have heard of the World Food Bank, there's just a, unfortunately, a tremendous need for those services. And so I applaud the school district for trying to be proactive, and the students, whoever is participating in starting those and managing those. So, just kudos for two areas where I see the district trying to meet the needs of the students today and the needs of the students in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Ms. Ellen Foster. Welcome, Ms. Ellen Foster, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. I was listening to the radio the other day, and I heard an interview of an author. Her book is called Imagination: A Manifesto, and it is now on my must-get-this-at-the-library-and-read-it book. The author's name is Ruha Benjamin. She's a professor of African-American Studies at Princeton University, where she's the founding director of the Ito B Wells Just Data Lab. She discusses why we are failing at imagining a better world and how thinking big is the path to unlocking good. And one of the things she said in her interview was that a budget is not a financial document, it is a moral statement. And I thought that was really profound, and I thought, okay, in District Six, some things I see that reflect that are the free lunch for everybody regardless of need, the state of the art, new buildings, the technology, the smart labs, the welcome centers so that people coming in from other countries know that we want them here and we value them here. The transparency in our budget and mill levy override where it is, all that data is available to anybody who has a computer to access it. The negotiations with the teachers and other staff, where its feud is, we are working together to make this happen, not an oppositional. So, I'm going to read the book. I'll bring a book report next time, but it's called Imagination: A Manifesto. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Mr. Bob Stack. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Stack.
Thank you, sir. Actually, I was looking for an envelope. You should have seen the smiles as they open their envelopes out, outside. Well, good evening, Mr. President, Ms. Vice President, the school board, and our superintendent will do that in abstention. Just two things, and both of them are thank yous, notes of appreciation. This one goes back to last year. Times haven't worked out quite right for me to be here, but I want to state tonight that when I brought up the issue of artificial intelligence... that when I brought up the issue of artificial intelligence and what our district is doing, I was quickly snapped up by Mr. Check and Mr. Ford, and given an onsite presentation, looked at the facilities, and there is now the beginning of a committee. There are three of us on it, Mr. Check, Mr. Ford, and Mr. Stack, but I was very impressed with what I saw. Second note of appreciation, and this comes from the Shawshin Horseshoe Neighborhood, right across from Shawshin School, and it has to do with the issue that we brought up of safety of the students before school and especially after school, and the action that the district has taken, and the city. Quite by accident or happenstance, I saw the officer that we have in that area pass out two tickets of people rolling through stop signs. We've had yellow paint put down in the no parking caution areas, and signs put up, two of the stop signs that say no parking within X number of feet. So again, thank you. I'm waiting for May to see the ink dry, but we're off to a good start. And would you please, Mr. Gates, tell the mayor that I appreciate what he has done and city council? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. Next tonight, we have Ms. Marissa Miranda. Welcome, Ms. Miranda, thank you for being here.
Kind of nervous, so just bear with me. I just wanted to address some allegations recently made by Sonia on social media and through a personal blog. They've been incredibly defamatory, outrageous, hurtful, and inaccurate. I'm so sorry. This information is false, and it should not be believed nor shared. I also just wanted to make it very clear, these allegations have been investigated more than twice and deemed false. And then when it comes to Save Haven, School District Six has been a constant in my daughter's life, and to have a place where she can learn and grow has been paramount to her development. These allegations threaten my daughter's sanctuary, and in no way has my daughter been assaulted, or exploited by the district or anyone else for that matter. As a mother, I stand with District Six, and at this time, we're asking for privacy and respect. Navigating such deprived accusations is incredibly difficult on myself and my family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. That concludes our public comment tonight. I will, I will just say what Ms. Foster mentioned, the Denver Seven news program that, that featured our smart labs. I, I just wanted to, I, I would be remiss if I did not thank the Success Foundation. The Success Foundation put in a lot of those smart labs, and we, we do lead the nation as far as we know in the number of smart labs, and so just wanted to say thank you to, to the Success Foundation for those. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. And this is an action item, so we'll need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Finally, tonight is, um, on our agenda is to authorize the superintendent to approve planned expenditures for March, and so this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the superintendent to authorize planned expenditures as presented until the March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four business meeting.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this agenda item? I will just say, the, the reason for this is that we will not be meeting as a board on the second Monday of, of March. That's because of spring break, and so that's a long time for us to go between board meetings, and sometimes we need to pre-authorize our superintendent to, to spend some money with especially respect to our bond issue to keep that work moving along. So I'm not seeing any other comments. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, that is all the business that we have tonight. Thank you for joining us. This meeting is adjourned.